Even though Commissioner Trey Wood is out with us this morning, we have a forum, so I declared forum and called the meeting ordered. Rob, come up and declare for it.
Thank you, Billy. Lovely Father, we thank you for this day and other week. And April is the month of Easter, the resurrection month, the month of life. And let us be reminded about the life that we have in you because of your love. And sadly, we take that for granted. Sadly, we put you on down the list when it comes to Easter time, but you should be number one. And I pray that over this meeting this morning, that you be number one in all that we do. Give us wisdom in all that is about to happen through this lengthy agenda. I thank you for each person represented here this morning, for their service, for their big hearts, for their willingness to step up and play a key role. And I thank you for these who are representing children this morning. Bless them for their leadership. Bless them for their willingness to be advocates for children in these unfortunate circumstances. And I pray for your protection, your hand of life. And I thank you for the encouragement that these special individuals here gathered this morning give to children and families in these difficult circumstances. Circumstances of abuse, circumstances of unwanted children. Father, these children are yours, and I pray your protection as we recognize all that happens through these ministries, through these agencies today. Thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for the gift of children. And thank you for the gift of these who lead our county in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Okay, everybody who's here for Child Abuse Prevention Month, whoever wants to come on up can come up, and I will read and sign the proclamation. Surely there's one or two of you who want to come up. We do this each year this time. Good morning. Thank you all for coming. As you know, this is something we do yearly. It's very important to us, so I want to make sure that I'm sorry to delay, but I want to make sure that I recorded and was up and live for the internet. All right, proclamation. Whereas I, County Judge Paul, will be joined President Biden proclaiming April is Child Abuse Prevention Month and recognizes the hard work, dedication, and passion of the volunteers throughout our county. And whereas Brown County commemorates Child Abuse Prevention and Volunteer Appreciation Month by highlighting child abuse prevention and recognizing its valued court-appointed special advocates, CASA, and Child Welfare Board, and the Children's Advocacy Centric volunteers. And whereas the government alone cannot meet all of the nation's needs, so we partner with businesses, faith-based organizations, nonprofit organizations, foundations, and individuals who serve in government and in our community to make the difference. And whereas Brown County is committed to encouraging volunteerism among its employees, citizens, partners, businesses, and organizations, therefore, I, Paul Lilly, County Judge of Brown County, do hereby proclaim April 202022 as Child Abuse Prevention and Volunteer Appreciation Month in Brown County, Texas, and urge our citizens to volunteer in our community throughout the year by volunteering and recognizing those who serve who promote partnership, understanding, collaborative problem-solving, and collaborative problem-solving in our home of Brown County. And then I will sign this state.
May I see that proclamation, Judge? I would like to offer a addition or correction to this. Since whereas County Judge Paul B. Lilly, how about Brown County Commissioners Court instead of you personally?
Well, certainly, certainly, as long as we get the proclamation. And it's not a resolution. It's proclamation. Proclamation by law comes from the judge. So that's the way it was written.
Well, it should be the Brown County Commissioners Court instead of just you. And it should be a resolution instead of a proclamation.
I hear you, Commissioner Worley. We just did the year the way it was done before I got here, and we've been continuing.
No, sir. It's been done as a commissioners' court.
Very, very much.
Thank you all.
They just gave me one to sign. We have digital copy. Certainly. All right, we'll be moving on. I'm going to skip down to item seven C's and Charles, which is Judy Bradley, Chairperson of Brownwood Brown County Child Welfare Board, consideration of possible action regarding approving of new Child Welfare Board members. Come on up.
Okay, we're pleased to be here. All we do for children. We have two new prospective members for our Child Welfare Board. The first one that I'll introduce is Carol Jane McNabb. Stand up. And if you know her, she's from Brownwood, a native of Brownwood. She graduated in 1988 from Brownwood High School. Pauline High School is attended by your university and Angelo State University. She's been a teacher for many years in the Brownwood area, is also in San Angelo in the school district, and then recently at the Austin Discovery Charter School. And now she's back teaching in Brownwood County Public High School. She's always been interested in the welfare and success of children, which is her main desire for participation in the Child Welfare Board. She's excited to be here, in common Brownwood, and looks forward to working with everyone for the betterment of our future. And she has been backgroundally. You going to each one separately or both together?
Each one. Well, we can go together, just introduce the second.
Okay. The other is Rowana McNeely. Rowana is an insurance agent for Farmers Insurance, Reston, Laralee, Moore Agency. She's been with the agency for two years, married to Erin McNeely, who is a telecommunications officer for Brown County Law and Portals Center. Rowana is the proud mother of Kiara and two bonus daughters, Hala and Mariah. Rowana is passionate about helping people and has always been involved in the community. She's previously worked for Alder's Gate and Richmond Center and the Brownwood Area Chamber of Farmers. Her service work includes serving as volunteer coordinator for the Brownwood Union, president of the East Elementary PTO, and currently serving as vice president of Cogent Intermediate PTO. In 2016, Rowana, Erin, and Kiara were presented with a volunteer of the Kiara Board. Investing in our children is very important to Rowana. As we stabilize our relationship with these children, it strengthens not only their lives, but also the community. By supporting children in need, it is possible to create a strong foundation that will help them grow into proud, healthy members of society that will carry on the mission of investing in the next generation. Rowana enjoys spending time with her family, friends, playing with her dogs, to write dance and box. She also is good at writing.
Judy, may I have both of those, please? I don't want to miss the names. I move we approve the appointment of Carol Jane McNabb and Rowana McNeely to the Brown County Child Welfare Board.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion on the matter? All in favor? Here's your unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So very, very much. All right, I'm going to jump down to item number seven G's and George. Judge Smith, I know you have a court waiting on you.
We actually, our jury got resolved, so we'll stay today, but we've got some other things to do.
Judge Smith, it's listed as updating on legal research. Let me say anything more.
Sure, I'll tell you what's going on here first. Welcome Jennifer to the, to New County Attorney here. Glad to have you. So effectively, the lawyers, so that would be the judges and prosecutors use what's called Westlaw for all of our legal research needs. That's in the legal library budget. It's not in mine or anybody else's, I think it's set aside. And over the last, you know, six months to a year, we've just been kind of looking at ways to see where we are with that. And effectively, what we've done is between the District Attorney's Office and the District Court, we don't get the hardbound copies anymore. Everything's online now. And so that savings is around $900 a month total. It's about $450 for each office, and so we don't do those anymore. And then Westlaw, currently, we pay $3,651 a month for all the legal research and $315 a month for what the pre-trial services office uses. So that's about, that comes out to $47,590 a year. We have gone to Westlaw's competitor, which is Lexus Plus, and we've asked them to give us a bid, and they have come back at a dramatic savings where we still get the same things that we need of about $1,460 a month. That's a saving of $30,000 a year. And so we feel like that's, that's a, Lexus Plus is going to give us what we need, and it's going to save the county money. Now, in fairness to Westlaw, we went back to them. They came down quite a bit too, but not quite as much. So I think, I've been talking to Michael Murray, County Attorney's Office, and we did a demo, everything. Everybody's ready to go on this. So I wanted to update you all on that and make sure that we have your blessing to enter into that new contract and that you authorized us to do this. So that's where we are on that issue. So, and what I wanted to pass along too, you all remember lots of conversations we had this last year on the Net Data, Tyler, Odyssey, all that stuff. We think those issues are still kind of looming out there. And part of our, why we're looking for ways to save money and other ways is to maybe come back in the budget process and say, look, here's some money that we can bring to you that could be maybe refocused. And those are discussions we'll have some other time, but I can tell you those issues are still out there. Having just gotten back from my first in-person judicial conference, those are concerned all across the state. And so those are out there. But all that to say, I just, I want to bring that to you and make sure the commissioners give us the authorization we need to enter into this new contract with Lexus. That we have Westlaw until August, and then Lexus actually is giving us the first six months free. So we'll start, the first bill we get from Lexus will be in February or March of 2021.
Well, my main proposition is this is not actually an action. It's not listed as an action item. It just says update, so we can take action.
Mr. Kelton, Judge Smith just said the current contract goes through August. So there's not really a need for an action item to be done here.
We can get back on the agenda for an action item and make sure that that's there. What I'm going to do is the, to lock in that first six months free, Lexus needs to know if that's what we're going to do. And he said an email will suffice. I told him I had to present it to you all. And so how do you feel about that? Can I let them know that we're comfortable moving forward? We've not signed any contracts at this point. So how do you want to handle that?
Well, that was the only thing I said.
It would have to be brought back.
We just don't.
I mean, it's in the very next year.
It doesn't have a sense of being able to take action. I'm not saying I'm not far, I'm just saying it's.
Yeah.
We can't actually take action.
Okay, we would have to take action right now. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't.
I may, what I may do, I actually, with court doctor, I may send someone else down here to get that kind of buttoned up so we can do that.
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, any questions about any of that?
You got the consensus from all involved pretty much on that?
Yes, the District Attorney's Office. Really, there's only about eight people that use these services in the courthouse. And so everybody, we talked about it. We did an online demo. Everybody participated to make sure we're comfortable with it. Nita and Jocelyn upstairs are comfortable with the new program they'll be using. And so.
I mean, I'm just saying I'm forward if we have everybody, it seems we can't take that.
Yeah, I updated her about it. And so, you know, it'll be a little bit of a change. It's the analogy I use is it's like you're going to drive a Ford your whole life, and now you're going to start driving a Chevy. I mean, it's the same thing. It's just a little different brand. And so that's effectively where we are. So, okay, any other questions?
Thank you, Captain.
All right, I can see you next week. Thank you.
Detective West, if you want to come on up. I'm going to call item number seven Q. It's in Queen, Honorable Joel Kelton, Commissioner Precinct Two, Gray West of, is it Abandonment?
Abandonment of the roadway. I haven't seen any paperwork on this. I mean, we'll discuss it on the phone.
I will.
Let me read it. In Abandonment of the roadway in Precinct Two, it doesn't say what roadway.
It doesn't have a number.
Okay, that's why.
It's on a particular property, so we can start explaining what property it's on.
It's on the property owned by the Bridges Corporation. Jimmy Bridges is the president of that company. First, let me echo what Judge Smith was talking about. In our, we have an extensive law library, always have had. And we just made the decision this last week, I cut $8,000 out of our budget by doing that with one set of books, one set of bullets, doing what he's talking about for consolidation into software. And I refuse to get off and forward and start driving the Chevy in his analogy, since I already know all the law, I don't have to worry about researching. Counsel, congratulations, but I want to introduce you to the, one of the sources of law that you'll have to be referring to frequently, and that is the Texas Transportation Code. Did I bring this section of that last week?
Yes, you did.
I would go. And for the court, that is the prescient statute that would dictate the abandonment of a road that crosses State Park Route 15. Actually parallels it one point, one eighth, well, I actually want to. You can share that. I know you don't want to sit by Judge Shaw and Shaw. Excuse me. Commissioner Shaw. The land that's involved is, what's, do you see under fence? This, now, this is not it. This is just, what is that? Elizabeth Yelbro, Brownwood Cross Plains Road. Before the lake was built, that was the primary artery from Brownwood Cross Plains. Upon the construction of the lake, and it was finished in 33, 34.
Was that a WPA or was it Corbin?
It was 33 or 34. Upon the completion of the lake, a series of roads began to be constructed to better access storefront property. State Park Route 15 was one of them. That's right here. Okay? Y'all know that it also, State Park Road goes out further north and intersects, oh, this is part right here. There it goes. And it intersects 279. So as you can see, this road became irrelevant. And this was actually fenced off across the road and has been for many years. And the part of the road that lies to the west of Park Route 15, as I understand, does service, what did I say? Is it Antioch City? Macedonia Cemetery.
Send me this.
This is probably to. It looks, it's. Okay. Macedonia. No, the road, the road outside, after it crossed as Park Route 15, is, I understand, it goes to the Macedonia Cemetery. The cemetery's not inside the Bridges property. There's nothing inside the Bridges property that that road serves. Now, I did find, Joel, you had questioned me, did we find a dedication? There was not a dedication. It was an article, like taking. There is a judgment entered in the District Court. It was actually entered in a federal District Court, but the property was granted to Brown County for the construction of, or for a right of way. So even though State Park, State Park Route 15 was built by the state, it's a county vote. I don't know who's responsible for the upkeep of the state.
We're going to leave it like.
Long story short, it was granted to the county, according to this judge.
Park Route 15?
The right of way for it was, along with other right of ways, rights of way. So this court does have the authority to abandon that public road. And that's as far, in a way, I have the deed prepared. I have, in my presumptuous nature, prepared a deed for your signature. Counsel. Likewise, for your approval. To you. Oh, this is what I did with all those copies. I put them together in a packet, and I forgot that I did. Now, I guess that's just legal.
Just a question, how come this one doesn't have to have a hearing? Like some roads do?
Well, because of the wording of the Transportation Code, we're not asked to close a used road. We're asked to have a declaration of the Transportation Code. Because the Transportation Code states if a road is not used by the public, it is then abandoned. And I'm asking for court declaration, it has been abandoned, not by the court, but by five. Oh, decades.
The only question is also if it actually can own property, you can't keep it supposed to use. If it is, I mean.
No, you, it's not, no, I know what you're saying. You cannot acquire limitations title against any government property. That's not what this is about. This is about deeming an abandoned road as abandoned. It goes under the Transportation Code, and I hope you can pull it up on your computer.
I have it. It's deemed abandoned if its use has become so frequent that one or more joint property owners have been closed the road with the fence continuously for at least 20 years.
And this road is one property.
The only issue I'm not sure on this morning is, I think it, under 251, 51, it requires unanimous vote of the commissioners in order to abandon it, and we're missing one.
We're still unanimous, so it was.
Okay, does that work?
I think.
We're still unanimous.
But.
Unanimous is the word used.
But there's also if it is.
If it requires unanimous, may I ask this court to? You're the, you're the.
Well, unanimous of the members present.
Is unanimous of the members present?
That's how I understand it.
Unanimous of the commissioners' court is required to. But the question, well, it says unanimous, so it doesn't say unanimous of the person. Is unanimous considered?
Yes. When, when they say unanimous, it's not necessarily the total members of the court.
Is that in the vote of the code?
It's the unanimous of the members present.
You know, I can't ever remember that. I'm not going to disagree with it.
I can't remember where it, where was the government code book? In New Judges School four years ago, that's what they taught us also.
I mean, there's.
Judges are.
That satisfies the county attorney.
It's like passing the budget. It takes unanimous vote, but it's unanimous of the members present.
Okay.
I do know that in the past that we have.
My request is really not to take any action other than to, for this court to declare that it falls within the definition set out.
Okay, so show me on the map one more time. We're talking about, there's four different, there's three different, there's three different properties. There's three properties.
Well, there are three surveys. This is the John Deason Survey, the Casper Levinson Survey, and the T survey. They're all owned by the Bridges.
Okay, and we have actually, under District, so we can work on a road to a cemetery just because it's a public deal. We've worked on this road here, worked on this cover time, but that's over here, but that's outside your property.
We want it closed from this point here.
Okay. How did he know that road existed until the realtor talked to me about it?
It's hard to catch it, it's hard to catch it except some, an aerial photograph. You can see a very faint.
Looks like a past road.
It looks like an old post office road. It used to cross our place.
Yeah.
And it was just a fallen out two wagon wheel track.
Right.
But nothing really.
How long would you say that road is?
From one end to the stop, or the other.
Yeah.
Cause you're scaling them out.
Here's the overhead on the front too. And y'all can kind of see.
I can see it.
See it?
My wife's probably still use it for a ranch road.
I don't know if they use it or not.
I don't know. I'm not a hundred percent sure about the legal aspects, but I have Precinct Two still open plain to that.
I would never, I would never conmiscit this court as to the law. It's one thing I don't do. I do a lot of other stuff, but that's one thing I don't do. Right?
Since that this road, whatever is not, doesn't show up on our county inventory of roads, we don't own it, but we can abandon it?
Well, really, it's not so much abandoning it, Commissioner Worley, as it is declaring that the road has been abandoned by lack of use. And it's in, it's in Joel's precinct. And I mean, it's really, I would say would be his motion to make. But that's all I'm asking for. It's just a declaration if this fits the criteria it's set out in 251 of the Transportation Code.
That's it, Joel?
What's my only, my only concern about that is though, if there is actually property there and it has value, that actually is in the county's name, which you're saying you haven't seen, we can't just give it away. We'd have to.
You're not giving it away. You're declaring that it has not been used for so long that it's abandoned.
What's the Transportation Code?
I think y'all better let me look it up.
Okay.
What's the Transportation Code number?
It's 251 57.
There's some things we can look at, Counsel. I've researched this to the point that it's beyond research.
Well, I am going to.
All you're going to find on it is the, is the Transportation Code section. And if you want to read, I'll read the D, volume 330, page 84, Brown County deed records. That is how the government took the road.
My request would be though, since this is her, let her give her. My request would be though, since this is her, let her give her time to, she got all the factors. Get her time to look at it and then we'll bring it back. I'd obviously have a problem with it, but I want to make sure she's comfortable with it.
You know, that offends me.
Don't be offended.
Anyway.
Don't be offended.
It's our job to do a fist for the county. I'm sorry if it offended you, but make sure we've done the due diligence for the county. So allow her, I would like to allow her.
The county's supposed to do due diligence.
I think so. So can, can we hang on to the map?
One of those back, y'all can keep one, and I want my overhead back.
I don't have your.
Maybe I could.
Okay.
Now, I gave you one, and I gave one to the judge for signature. Do you review that? Do you have any questions about extracting? It's one of about a thousand of that.
I agree that the road has not been used by the county in the year, I mean, not existed, but as far as the actual abandonment process, I'd love to look into that.
Well.
Clear the title.
Finalizes coverage.
From Brown County to?
From Brown County to the corporation owns the property. That's what's being requested by the title insurance under. And then there's, there's conveying property at some point, and they'll, uh. That looks the way it is. Thank you. Putting me up on the schedule. Yes, have a nice day.
Sir. We'll take no action on that item. Uh, getting back to our agenda, item number four was citizens' comments, but I didn't have anybody sign up for speed. So there was no urgency on that one. Uh, item number five is consideration approval of agenda minutes from previous meeting, uh, March 21st, 2022. Should've got those by digital form.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting as presented by Sharon, the county clerk.
Sir.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carries unanimously. Item number five, consideration approval, uh, any treasurer or auditor reports? So then we'll back down to seven, seven A is an item. It's Commissioner Kelton, consideration of possible action regarding the burn ban.
Uh, I think it probably still needs to remain on, in my opinion, for, if we get a real rain or two, it's a green.
I would like, like to see it remaining in place.
I agree. Is that what you recommended also?
Yes, sir.
Agreed. Right, so we'll take no action on the burn ban. Item number seven B is in boys, Lisa Dick, is Lisa here?
No.
Okay, so we'll pass on item number seven B. Seven D is in David, Cheryl Jones, our district clerk. Consideration approval regarding, uh, action, regarding declaring item surplus. Sorry. Ms. Jones?
Good morning. In preparing, first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to use a job for for our big project that we underwent last week. It was very successful, and it would not have been that successful if we not had that. In preparing for this project, we were trying to clear out the, the downtown, the down, outside basement. And, uh, there's just a lot of stuff in the way that's not being used. There are 11 metal cabinets in the outside basement that were outdated decades ago. Some belong to my office, some belong to Sharon's office, and some belong to the JP, JP office. As best we can tell, we are all in agreement that they should be, that they are outdated and they need to be declared surplus. And I've got pictures. Y'all, that's it.
That's a list?
Pardon me?
That a list of them?
There's 11 of those?
There's 11. 11, and some of them are the trifles.
Yes.
That are empty. And then some of them are just these old rusted metal cabinets that had floors about that big. There's just, there's pictures for everybody to see. Anyway, I'm asking that I need to put in surplus and have permission to list them on the, the surplus one. So I was done, so we can make room for actual files and file cabinets, which are currently down there. That used to be a lot that we had, you know, back in.
Back in the day.
Back in the day, that's all that we had. And we sold it all to the preacher.
These are two action items, so I would make a motion to allow them to declare a surplus with a list created, was 11 items, and they're on that list.
Sir.
So the motion is that we declare the surplus.
Okay, so we have motion and a second?
Motion and a second to declare surplus.
All right, all right. Can we even describe them? And we've been, uh.
There's 11 metal cabinets.
Eleven metal cabinets.
Do you want the pictures?
We'll give a note to Sharon, the other, yeah, Sharon, not Sharon.
Right, so.
The little lady with the asshole there.
That's how the motion reads, uh, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carries unanimously. And item number, uh, seven E is in Edward, is also, uh, Ms. Jones, uh, consideration of possible approval of action regarding selling surplus items on W deals.
Yes, we're asking that we, or I will sell.
The very items we just declared.
Yes, yes.
My motion would allow us to sell by surplus items on W deals.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and then lastly, uh, is also, uh, seven F is also Ms. Jones, consideration of possible approval of action regarding, uh, purchase of a network printer.
Yes, we, we print jewelry cards, um, twice a month. And the printer that we've had, we've had for years, and it's, it's on the components. And, um, I'm just asking that we, um, the cost for a new one of that, of that same quality is $1,190 plus the installation of $240. And I've got funds, I've got a records management fund, and then we have a tech fund. In order to use the tech fund, I need to, um, check with the district judge and county court of law judge, which I have asked, I have a response. But it doesn't matter if we need a printer. And so I'm asking permission to do that.
Do we need to purchase it, or do we need a lease one?
Well, we've always purchased them before.
I, I don't know.
Is it a specific kind of printer?
Yes, sir. Here it is. We're just trying to replace what we had prior, and we've always purchased them in our office in the past.
It lasts, it lasts a long.
Yeah, it'll be about 10 years.
What do you recommend?
I recommend that we go with that because it's true to me. That kind of printer is going to be, be good for that.
I was going to ask Matt if he had any, do you have the, uh, input on that?
I, I agree with, uh, with her choice, and I actually prefer purchasing or leasing.
All right, and that's fine.
I'm going to allow her to purchase the printer she needs if she just.
What was the cost again?
$1,190. And then there's a $240 installation.
Sir. Here we have motion and a second to allow purchase of this printer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Judge? I'd like, I'd like after short break. I'd like after short break. Is that possible?
Sure. We need to take a short recess.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.